Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, in the unlikely events of fire alarm being activated, please leave the town hall using the nearest designated fire exits. The full of only seventy points at the rear on Exchange Parks. I'd be sure all my workers would be off.
Good evening, all members. Can I advise that apologies for absence have been received from councillors, four brands, Nick Croft, Kay Davis, Ross Broome, Colin McCally, Jed Taylor and Jarrod Woodhouse. Are there any further apologies, please?
Can I remind those present that this is a meeting held in public and not a public meeting? I would also like to emphasise that these are key meetings. Can I therefore request that everyone present, including the public, drink these meetings accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with effectively. The use of social media and filming for the reporting proceedings is permitted during council meetings. This does not extend to the filming of parents of the public. And anyone wishing to film proceedings are also particularly direct to the very sensitive issue of filming children without the express permission of their parents.
Members and officers will be aware of the sad news of the death of Ken Cawley last week. Many members of this chair and office, who remember Ken as a longstanding officer of the City Council, having most people on top table, maybe volatile discussions, laying their skills on Ken, he was an outstanding officer of the top of the staff, knew his philosophy inside out, particularly several times in the eighties and nineties, to such a degree that he was on the Christmas invite to the Apple Street, sorry, the police Christmas dinners, because the police were there to live in his office for about four years in the eighties. And just to place on record, my thanks for the support he gave in my own years on the council. He was an outstanding officer, which should pay our respects, as family friends and give them our best wishes. And I'm going to start the presentation here and again the full likelihood.
Thank you, councillor D.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A declaration of interest. Can I remind members that you are only required to declare meetings on a disposal or contributory or prejudiced interest, in which case the member will leave the chair, which is not the answer. Can I also remind members of the contents of letters circulated to you on 23th of February this year relating to the budget, specifically an amount due respect is for that council tax has not been paid for at least two months after it became payable, that he or she should not vote on any question concerning firstly, a calculation relating to the setting of council tax, precepts or limitation of council tax and precepts. Secondly, any recommendation, resolution or other decision which might affect the making of such a calculation. And thirdly, the administration or enforcement matters in relation to council tax itself. Are there any such declarations, please?
I need to declare a contributory interest in agenda item number five by virtue of my appointment. I'll make sure with all of that.
All the minutes of it during a city council meeting and the city council meeting held on the 18th of January 2017, agreed? Just a couple of things to try to start the meeting proper. I've got a apology to make actually from the last meeting. Councillor Miller, I was quite rude to you at last meeting. I wanted to apologize, it wasn't worthy of you, certainly wasn't worthy of you, so I wanted to apologize to this board. So I was a bit tired, a bit knarky and certainly my husband wasn't there, so you know, I usually text it out on these, you wouldn't hear it, so I'm really sorry. Sorry, Councillor, did you?
Even Councillor Miller will agree properly, no?
It's just, he hasn't. Okay, moving on. Now, the other thing I've got to say is my old mate Samir Kalakesh is leaving us in April and this is the last council meeting that he's going to be at. Now, Samir, Samir and I worked together for about six, seven years and English is his second language, he speaks about eight languages. Yeah, English is his second, I think he speaks, I'm not sure, isn't it? It's his second language. He used to tell everybody that he and I were going to retire together and I used to say, Samir, no, that gives the wrong impression, we are retiring at this stage in time. But he is actually going, he's going off to Passages New, I'm not quite sure what he's doing, do something else. Anyway, so I would like to raise some record, my thanks to you for the work that you've done before you not be made for six years for a kick-off, but for all the things you've done in this council, so I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Lord Mayor, can I just say a few words, please?
Yes, why?
Most of us on our channels meet very interested people, especially when the night is busy and the world rests with the four corners of the year. And met very interested people who you never forget. Well, I can say from the bottom of my heart, we were blessed that Sammy come to us, we didn't have to go and work for him. First time I met Sammy, I went into his office and I asked him a question and was so impressed about the eagerness of Sammy to get me an answer there and then, something that I've never ever seen before with any officer. What shone through for me was not just the fact that he was taking the box, it was the empathy that I could feel coming from him and the things because of that empathy and because of his knowledge and his life and reason, he actually knew what he was taught about, that they become with any type of whatever. Sammy, you're in my heart, you'll always be there. You're charismatic, you're classy, but most of all, you've got commitment and you're laughing eleven, from two years to Liverpool and you've looked after all of us and for that, I'm sure, everyone and myself in this chamber are determinedly grateful. I love you with all my heart and soul, I wish you and your partner all the best in Passages New and I hope you'll be safe and I hope I see you again.
Thank you, Sharon, thank you. Okay, this is a budget meeting, as you know, so we're going to press on with this. Can I advise councillor, no statements or petitions have been received. So as members of your work meetings, to discuss the budget only, and as such, I want to give the maximum opportunity for members to speak this evening with the permission of the council. Mayor Anderson will present the budget to the council, the move of an amendment and the right of reply will have ten minutes to speak. All of the speakers will be allowed five minutes and with the consent of the council, a two-minute extension to allow the maximum possible number of members of the council to speak. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Chief of De.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I advise members that car votes will be conducted as prescribed against standing order twenty-four of the city council constitution, when amendments and the budget motion are considered. It should be recorded within the minutes of the proceedings where a member's caster vote for the decision or against the decision or whether a member abstained.
Can I ask Mayor Anderson to move item five, please?
Hey, Lord Mayor, can I move that the statements of the chief financial officer on the revocation of the estimates for 2017-18 and the adequacy of provisions and reserves for 2017-18, through to 2019 and 20, are set out on pages twenty-four to fifty-eight of the council agenda, be noted and declared?
Are there any questions on the statements? No. I'm sorry, Steve.
My Lord Mayor, now thank the officers for the quite comprehensive reports being put to us today. I think that is also a great consideration of the pressure they're under and I think the narratives are quite clearly passing the direction of travel and some of the priorities have been quite well presented and I think we should all be grateful for the work done to equip them with the budget forward. One of the questions I've raised at several budget meetings and I'd just like to reiterate, I know it has a budgeting impact, but it has a social impact as well, is any improvement in our budget, the priorities of reducing the number of vacancies and improving the new houses are high grade. In the sense of reducing the number of vacancies, also reduces the social aid combined in enabling properties and in that way, I know this council has some initiatives. Could the major council, one of his team, I mean, essence, guide us? Is there any further initiatives that could be taken to reduce the number of vacancies? I appreciate we've got the landlord's scheme that has some effort. I appreciate this council supported group motions to tax vacant properties, that will have a benefit. But is there any other material ways the council thinks they can drive forward that objective that are not being done currently? Now, in particular, I'm very conscious of a run by near city council has engaged private firms to actually help with the vacancy issue.
Lord Mayor, I'm not sure if this is going to be able to do the office's second statements, however, our address is by saying it is, it's good for the federal economy for future resolution. What I would say is, of course, we are aggressive about issues of vacancies on a regular basis, that's why we do the whole of the pound, that's why we do the initiative across the city. And next month, as we set out our new company, that was set out our housing companies, that was established, we will also be looking at taking up some of the properties, refurbishing them as part of our offer. So it's important to bring that in mind, that it isn't just a question of leaving empty properties that we noted, we can see the owner and we can buy them as they become available. And as I said, we're doing that, we have done it. And examples of that are what we've done around Kensington, what we've done in Anfield, what we've done in the Hamlet and what we continue to do. So I think the answer to the question is simply, you know, we're doing what we can and we're doing a lot more of it.
Any other questions? No, okay. Are those statements noted and endorsed?
Agreed.
Agreed. So item six, budget 2017-18, and I call on Mayor Anderson to present the budget and have the super to make a recommendation, see if I can say, under the relevant protocols.
I'm going to have to switch this round because I'm going to have to tilt it up with the angle to get that. Lord Mayor, we're going to do a presentation anyway. But before I go into the presentation, it was my intention to comment on Samir Kalakeshi and Samir's departure from the council. I think all of us that know Samir, know that he's a man of integrity, a man of honesty, a man of dedication and a man who's committed to helping people in the, and I can honestly say, as somebody that's worked with him, somebody who's cried because of some of the things that we've done, someone who's also been happy and excited about some of the hopes that we've created despite the challenges financing that we've made, that it's been a real privilege and honour to have known you in this role. Our friendship will continue, as I'm sure it will with many others. But I can honestly say, I'm not hard and I've been a councillor around about eighteen years, been one of the best officers that I've ever, ever worked with. And the fact that his decency and his integrity and his honesty and his way ethic has meant that we've been able to protect services despite losing ninety million pounds of funding to add on social care is testament both to yourself and Ross and your contribution that you made over the years. And as I said, we've cried a lot together over many, many occasions and meetings where we've had to make some decisions. So as Sharon said, you know, good luck to you, we'll be keeping you in our prayers and if you say the break, we'll come back and see you, okay? Thank you. Now, also, as I started with the budget process, because, you know, it is, as I said, as somebody that's been around for a long time and somebody that's seen budget meetings in this council, you know, most of the budget meetings that I've been asked, have been dealing and tending with, small amounts of cuts and usually they've been actually doing things that were necessary to do, like reducing council tax and all of those things, but they were based on the fact that we had a government that was supporting this council with funding. And since 2010, we've been in a situation that I'll explain as I go through the presentation of what we faced. But can I just say, one of the things that gives me huge amounts of pride is not just, as I said, the likes of Samir, but the officers in this council and the trade unions in this council that have worked with us every single step of the difficult path that we've been on since 2010, to actually keep our city functioning, running and to protect the people. And, you know, I say constantly, you know, to people who work in the city council, join your trade union, be proud of your trade union, work with your trade union because they belong to this organisation just as much as anybody else. And that's always something that we should remember, the workforce are our trade union colleagues and we'd be delighted and happy to have them working with us. And I just also want to pay tribute to the team executive and to the director of finance, to Peter Castleton and all his team, and also to the directors as well, who faced some meetings, long meetings lasting too well into the night bed and a lot of oil and candles to actually try to resolve the problem. That almost became difficult every single week as we waited for government announcements and as we actually waited for fire and settlement. So I want to place on record my thanks, but also the cabinet's thanks, the cabinet members' thanks. And I'd like to thank the cabinet personally for all their efforts and for all their work alongside me, loving to find solutions to what is clearly usually a difficult task. So, as I said, the ring, I want to thank our staff most importantly because we, I've said it, you know, the meetings that are held with the workforce here, that we depend so much on them and they're doing so much more with less, that as I said, it is our job to remind the public of the fantastic work that they do. So thank you all for your support and your contributions and help us. Let me just, to do a quick word this technology now. There we go. Okay, this is, I just want to talk to you in terms of, before I move the budget, explain to you where we are at today, but also just remind you of where we come from. And it's important to do that, it's important to remind ourselves of what's happened to us since 2010. Now, as an administration, I came into the office in the old municipal building and started to get some absolutely remarkable stats and figures that we had to deal with and pick up. And there then, on there, if you add them up, if you add them up, that comes to a full year of council tax. So we'd lost it, a full year of council tax. If you look at that board and tells you what we inherited, seventeen million in adult social care, Samir Kalakeshi will tell you that, seventeen million, eleven million pounds in children's services, we even picked up a bill for capital culture in 2008 of twenty-two million pounds. And the biggest insult of all, despite the knowing about it for five years, the previous administration never sorted out single status and equal pay. And again, our trade union colleagues will actually testify to that's something that we had to deal with and we had to pick up. That's a four years' council tax, white house in debt that we inherited and we had to pick up. So we need to remind people of that. And then, of course, then we had something that we didn't imagine would happen, but we had a government that clearly tried to, and still is, dismantle local governments. And if you look at that four hundred and seventy million pound in real terms, that's exactly what this administration, this administration has had to deal with over the last six years. We lost a hundred and twenty-seven thousand of our renewal and when councillor Radford talks about the empty properties and stuff, of course, we probably wouldn't have many of those properties developed and empty if we hadn't had that hundred and twenty-seven million house of our renewal initiative taken away from us. And then we had three hundred and fifty million pound of built in schools with a few checks taken away from us, endorsed in April 2010, endorsed, granted, signed and in June 2010, pulled away from us. And of course, having said that, then we got drip, 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 responsibilities passed to this administration as to others across the country. Each time something was passed forward to us, it was actually to reduce funding, reduce green finance funding. That meant we had to pick up the pieces and a consequence of the budget meant that we lost staff. And of course, you know, the importance of thinking was councillor Juarez, as we said, get over it in terms of the city's boom on the cuts. Well, you know, five out of the six years that we faced the savage cuts that we faced in the city were with a Liberal Democrat administration. We had a hundred and thirty-eight million pound of deficits and debt that we inherited from the local Liberal Democrats and then the national Liberal Democrats gave us four hundred and seventy million pounds worth of cuts. So we'll never forget that, councillor Juarez or, I think, I'll be able to speak. Come back and hear the councillor's words, please. Okay, council tax context, I just wanted to talk to people about that context and again, it's fairly important that people understand that and actually get to know those figures and understand really why we talk about the problems we face, that tear ourselves to others. And, you know, when Colby Dave, before he became upper position as MP in Whitby, I was down here last Saturday, by the way, my brother-in-law lives down there, it's quite a beautiful place, with no potholes and no problems. But that one constituency of Whitby in Oxfordshire actually gets more in council tax than the five constituencies in Liverpool. One constituency in the south of England gets more in council tax than we do. And there's another amazing fact, Bristol, with a smaller population than Liverpool by about thirty, thirty-four, thirty-five thousand, actually gets thirty-eight million pound more in council tax than Liverpool. And the reason, of course, is because they have higher bands of council tax, sorry, or council tax bands that give them a higher income than we can. And that is thirty-eight million. And the fact that the matter is, that's not Bristol's fault, but that is, if you like, the floor in the local rate support grant that is divvied out by this government. And I have to say, by previous Labour administrations, we should have solved the problem of the barn corner. And there you go, that bottom figure, if we received the average cut, not the lowest, not the lowest, but the average cut, we'd be a hundred and twenty-three million pound better off if we really cut anything. The fact we have, as you can see, thirty-three million pound to spare. And there it is, that's what we've dealt with, that's exactly what we've dealt with since the budget in 2011, twelve, there the figures, there the facts that are clear, not spun, that are absolutely good for anybody to see and for anybody to check, there the figures, there, four hundred and twenty, four hundred and seventy in real terms is that particular figure. And of course, when we became the administration, you know, we wanted to do so much more in terms of to change this city for the better. But because of that fifty-eight, let's be clear about this, if any private sector company lost fifty-eight percent of the funding, it would go on then. But we lived with that fifty-eight percent. But what we set out was to make sure that our administration protected the overall interest in the city and also try to grow our city. Because in 2020, as I keep reminding the council, I keep reminding the public, in 2020, grants for the city and not just for Liverpool, but grants for all councils and actually removed, which means we have to fend for ourselves. And that's why it's important that we grow the economy, we create jobs, we create new businesses in order for us to survive. That's why we build new houses and we'll show how that has helped us. That's why the innovative things about our house building, cooking, that we're setting up, will actually help us protect and support services. So they're the two tentative, you like, they're the two things that will pay this administration and what it's about. And so if we look at where we are and the council tax and the budget, we pull that before you and why we're doing the things that we're doing. We are increasing the council tax by four point nine percent. Within that is the preset now, the social care preset, which we are actually, it's allowed, we've got to do it over three years, we've brought it into two years so that we can actually get the money as quick as we need it. And so that's where probably down to about nine million pounds, just over eight point eight million pounds is the figure, if you like, to be exact, for the dedicated social care preset. And then, one of the things that, again, you know, when people look back at this administration and how it's conducted itself and how it's behaved and what it's done, you know, we haven't had the fortunate partnership of a government that has been funding and supporting our city in a fair way. We've had the unfortunate partnership of a government that is hell-bent on destroying all the government. And that's why when David Cameron, before he rose to big society, launched the fact that austerity was going to be something that this government was going to continue with, and he asked for twenty-five percent from all departments across the government, and then at Pickles, the zellers who know nothing about local government, offered Cameron twenty-seven percent in terms of cuts. And as a result of that, you know, we've been getting budget. But when in 2020, we have the business rates that comes into effect, I signed up to be part of a pilot scheme, a business pilot scheme, and we gave evidence to the CLG Select Committee of local governments about how that would impact on us. And I made sure that Liverpool had in our clause for the business rates pilot, a no detriment clause. And that meant that as the, as we moved to 2020, there's an incremental scale rise of business rates retention, we've been able to argue that the detriment to us is the of business rates retention, we've been able to argue that the detriment to us is there to see and for everybody to see quite plainly. And we've been able to manage to get some funding under the Better Care Fund and the business rates into our city budgets. And together with the thirty million pounds that we're using from reserves and the eight million pounds that we've got through the police acts, we've been able to do things differently. And rather than hit services with a forty-five million pound cut, we've been able to balance that out, take that twenty-two million off. And that's why we're able to protect some services and do things differently with some investments, which mean that we're protecting the vulnerable, but still growing the city's economy and creating new business. So, in 2010, and I actually thought that councillor Radford was going to raise an issue when he got on, on that particular issue of the budget. Don't forget, this is only, this is only, it's still going to warranty this issue. That might be my taste making. I'll try and move it over here. So, but the top part of it, one hundred and seventy-four billion, if you notice in the budget report, for those of you that have read it, you'll see that we are now with reserves that are below five percent, which is not the right application. It might help if you turn it off, but I'm gonna get a whiff of my skybox. Turn it off, turn it on. It might, it might, it might. So, there you go, I'll take the, the, the slide. So, one hundred and seventy-four million is what we had in reserves. And we've used those reserves every single year. And that's what we're using in terms of putting into adult social care. And we've done that, Samir will tell you that we've done that every single year, not just put money into adult social care, but also into children's care and supporting, supporting some particular services as well. So, as I said, it was twenty-four point eight last year, we're setting that, it says on there, we're setting about thirteen million in the reserves to be used in eighteen, nineteen and nineteen, twenty, plus that money for the Better Care Fund, which all means that, as I said, we can do things differently. Okay, there's some money within reserves that we can't use and that's about EU clawback and legal claims and insurance and that sort of thing. Okay, I don't know if the screen will come on, but if you're just listening, we're working on a three-year budget and we've rescheduled the debt. We've actually tried to do that quite successfully, all credit to Becky and Peter and the team for being able to do that and that saved us some funding, some money. Well, let's have a look at what we're able to do. The issue of all stop shops, what we are, I mean, when the all-stop shops were, were set up in 2001, they were mainly using neighbourhood bill fund that was set up, but it was because we had a housing stock and rightly so, they were important. But today, with new technology, with the fact that we've got no council housing, it's arguable that we certainly don't need the number and especially if we are trying to protect services like adult social care and children's services, that we have to look at that. So, in the budget is enough money to pay for the all-stop shops for this year, but it's important that we realise that particular saving, seven. And so, we're going to set up a task group that looks at how we can do things differently. And we're also talking to the government because the Job Centre Plus has moved it into St John's Market and we've got the government who are talking to us about a state programme where they're going to look at measures of their estate with, the government's estate. And so, there's a real possibility that we might end up in any of them closing, that we could put CAVs in there with Job Centre Plus to try and get a, a better fit and a better approach. But that's for the task group to decide and we'll look at that with a clue, other parties if they're interested, if they enjoy that, that we probably make. And then, if you look at the, the library service, let me be absolutely clear, you know, to those who were demonstrating outside saying, please remove, bring the library, but let me suggest to them that they want to get that book, they want to read that book and read the facts of financial, the facts of life within what we're dealing with. But it's not only intention in this council to close any library, it's our intention to work in a way, in a creative way, working with the voluntary sector, working with the trade unions, working within our own estate, to actually protect all of our libraries if we can. That's our intention. I obviously remember councillor Baker middle telling people, and I, Allen, two years ago, that we were closing Allen Library. That's the type of things that, of course, we'll face with whatever, whatever we come up with. But there is no intention to close any library, we've got to review the, look at the situation and we will have another task force because they're protected for twelve months, but we will look at that and we'll be able to draw to the council in six months' time for us to debate and look at, there'll be consultations within that. And that's the same for our all-stop shops. So, I take it this has actually broken down then, no one can see these schools except me. So, then, going to protect the most vulnerable. And if you look at what we've actually done, and you know, when the debate's going on around the homeless and family and what we do to support people, it's important that everybody in the council anyway understands, I mean, obviously I can't predict what people do with the information, how they want to spirit and lie for their own political aims. But the reality is that that's money, the, the twelve billion, is spent on people who find themselves homeless. And what we do is we provide seven hundred and fifty beds in hospitals every night and we help over six thousand people and stop them from becoming homeless. And we're praised by Public Health England, we're praised by Shell, and praised by Public Health England as the best in the country, and yet we're slammed by the Liverpool Echo. And that, to me, is an absolutely appalling situation, is the financial challenges that we face as our city is inherently by choice not taken up or known by the Liverpool Echo and the Royal Attack. Because as you see, it's a day's paper with the rails that are hooked on the Mount Pleasant Pleasant Car Park, which are deliberately put there so we can house machines that go into the city centre to clean the city centre. Disgraceful, the Echo calls that our railings to ban homeless people from being there. An absolutely disgraceful comment from the Echo and disgraceful journalism that prints it. Okay, if you look at the things that we're doing in terms of three million pounds in addition to the twelve billion, in addition to the twelve billion, three million pounds shielded forty-three thousand people, forty-three thousand people. Last year, we see the council tax support from this administration, forty-three thousand people. Two point five million was paid for crisis payments to twelve thousand people. Twelve thousand people last year presented themselves to the council, to us, for crisis payments because they've been sanctioned or they weren't able to get benefits. And without us giving them that financial support, they would have been evicted. So, that adds to the fact of how many homeless people were protected. So, that you're piping a Liverpool Echo and printing, but that's a fact. And then, we spend two million on discretionary housing payments affecting eight thousand seven hundred people. All this information is on our website, all this information is available to the Liverpool Echo, who choose not to print it. And then, there will be another, what we're doing, by the way, in this budget, what we're doing in this budget is actually providing an extra two million pounds this year than we did last year. We're actually providing an extra two million pounds to target those most in need because we know how difficult it is for people to survive and manage in this city under a Tory government. That's why we're doing it. And then, as I said, if you look at that fact, that two billion, and then we look at what we've done in terms of protecting adult and children's social care, and you look at the scale and the size of the money that is paid out to run those particular services, that the eight percent of the overall savings proposed coming in those services, I would do our damnedest to make sure that they don't come out of frontline services, but they come out of the back of office services and anything else that we can do. So, what are we protecting? Well, no children's centres are closed in Liverpool and we're protecting children's centres once again in this city, protecting our children's centres when there's been several other children's centres across the country closed. Liverpool, despite the fact that we've got half a state council in the whole country, is protecting our children's centres. And we're setting up in the ways of things like the Liverpool Blackie Company, working with Nottingham City Council, we're protecting the CRU because we know how important the community and voluntary sector is to the vulnerable within this city and we're doing that and protecting them and that's important. The schools with crosser controls, of course, are protected. What we've already done as well, and people know about this, we give a million pounds to credit unions in the city, we've got the discretionary fund which helps local groups, the Wales Hope Fund that's paid for deliveries and for vans to help our food banks and also gave direct funding and grants to them. And you know, I stuck this in because I, you know, I hear the, you know, outside the demonstration. And it's ironic, isn't it, that, you know, where we've gone through, probably, as I said, more difficult challenges in times than anybody. And I remember the first year that we had a consultation with the public and it was made up of the old militants and all of those that, that wanted to come and protect us from the abuse and the language was appalling. And that was in 2011 and they predicted that Liverpool would be bust by 2012. Well, yeah, there we are. And the bottom line as well is, and remember this, and it's important that you do, because when I talk about protecting the most vulnerable, when I talk about standing up for the weakest in this city and trying to protect them, if we set an illegal budget, because that's what they ask, that's what they're asking for, that's what they want, there would be no mandarin from Whitehall because the law doesn't allow us to set a legal budget, there'll be no sort of repeat of the glorious defeats of the eighties. What would happen would be, within days, there would be officials that come into this city to run the services in this city. And let me tell you the frightening thing about that, they haven't got your values, they haven't got your principles, they haven't got your feelings about protecting the most vulnerable. They would just simply cut the easiest options and we wouldn't be able to do any of the things that we do in this city. So, be careful what you wish for, the militants within our city. Okay, so then we move on to the second strand of what we've done within our city and how we've tried to generate money that are...